A very wonderful afternoon each and every one of us. Well, before we start, I would just like to ask everyone, how are you on this wonderful day? Because you know, this past few weeks has been difficult to us. A storm has brewed, actually two storms has brewed within our area of responsibilities. And I would just like to ask, how are you guys? Are are we all okay? Are we safe during? Okay, and I can truly agree that we are all safe because we are all here now in this meeting. Yeah, and that's a truly wonderful thing. Okay, and before we start, I would like to give you an overview of our program. So today, November eighth, we will be talking about everything. There has to be coffee. And the program goes like this. The call to order was was already led by T M Steph. Then followed, then it will be yeah, followed by invocation and T M Promise by by Juwi. Then followed by the theme of the day or the introduction of theme of the day, which will be done by George Truly, then word of the day by our very own D P M Norma Blackhawk. Then the table topic that will be led by T M Elaine. Then there will be the most awaited part of this meeting, the prepared speeches. We have two speakers for this session. That would be T M Steph and T M Pow. Then after the initial program, we will move on to the education portion. We will have our general evaluation, which will be led by T M Rundell. Then the table topic evaluation by T M John Paul Pantoha. Followed by the prepared speeches evaluation by again, T M John Paul Pantoha and T M J C. Followed by grammarian, which will be led by T M Norma, D P M Norma. And then timer and counter by T M June. Then since we don't have guests, we won't have any guess or comment feedback. And then the president's time and announcement by our very own T M Steph and also the adjournment. So now, before we start officially start our program, let's have our prayer and invitation and T M Promise by T M Juwi. T M Juwi, the floor is yours.
Okay, so thank you, T M Gem. So let us all bow our heads in the most holy way. Lord, we thank you for this day, the blessings that have given us and the strength that you've provided for us during these trying times. Especially when you have encountered multiple storms and even the pandemic. We wish for all of our fellow citizens in here in the Philippines to have, to give strength to face other challenges. We're gathered here to improve ourselves and to help other people and to help them lead a better future. Lord, give to the Father, into the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. Okay, so now, um, let us all raise our hand for the Toastmasters' Promise. Can I sh- uh, again Gem or who is the host? Can I share the screen? Okay, one uh, yeah, one moment. Okay. Okay, so let us raise our right hand for the Toastmasters' Promise. As a member of Toastmasters To help the club maintain the positive, friendly environment necessary for all members to learn and grow. To serve my club as an officer when called upon to do so, to treat my fellow club members and our guests with respect and courtesy, to bring guests to club meetings so they can see the benefits of Toastmasters' membership offers, to adhere the to the guidelines and rules of all Toastmasters' Education and Recognition Program, to act within Toastmasters' core values of integrity, respect, service, and excellence during the conduct of all Toastmasters. Back to the Toastmasters, Gem?
Uh, okay. Thank you very much, T M Steph, T M Juwi for that very heartwarming prayer and giving us our Toastmaster's promise. And now, let us all start with our theme of day. It's all about coffee. Well, I guess we can all agree that we have built a special relationship with coffee, or at least majority of us. Coffee has been a part of our everyday life. Our mornings wouldn't be complete without a smoking cup of coffee. When we spoil the night away, for example, we study for our exam, do our project, or if you are assigned to a night shift job. I know some of you know that feeling. Coffee is our reliable partner. Coffee is a very perfect partner with a good chat with friends, with your favorite novel, or simply in this cold, gloomy weather. Well, the history of coffee is still unknown. When was this discovered? But there is a popular legend of how it was discovered. In the Ethiopian forest, there was a person or a goat herder known as Kalbi. And while he is herding his goat, he saw that this goat of him is eating some sort of berry. And then he noticed that his goat become alert after eating this of this wild berry. So what he did, he picked those berries, then made a drink out of it. And he noticed that after drinking that that beverage, he became alert during the evening prayers. Because yeah, he's he's doing evening prayers in the monastery. And then when he he discovered that, he reported it to the abbot of the monastery and they needed this drink so that they could laugh or be alert during the evening prayers. And that's the popular story of how coffee began. Again, it's still a legend. No one knows that if this is the real history of coffee. But no matter what, we can all agree that coffee has been a great part of our life. And for us coffee lovers, we cannot imagine life without coffee. So let's talk about how we love it. So come on, let's have a discussion over a cup of coffee. Okay, so now for the word of the day, let's all wel- before we start with our table topic, let's let's welcome first our D P M, D P M Norma for our word of the day. D P M Norma, the floor is yours.
Okay, good afternoon. As a grammarian, it is my responsibility to pay close attention to all the speakers, listening carefully to their language usage, and I'll take note of the improper language as well as any outstanding words, posts, saying, or thoughts. As a grammarian also, it is my duty to introduce to introduce to you the word of the day. For today's meeting, the word of the day is something related to coffee also. And the word is percolation, percolation. The spelling of percolation is, I'm sorry, I did not have, I prepare for something to share a screen. Percolation is spelled as P E R C O L A T I O N. Percolation. I'd like to repeat, percolation is spelled as P E R C O L A T I O N. Now, let me say something about percolation. The etymology of the word is from the La- from Latin word percolare. Means to filter. It refers to the movement and filtering of fluid through porous materials. Uh, it is a noun and sometimes it is used as a verb. The per- pronunciation is percolation. The meaning is it is a process of a liquid moving slowly through a substance that has very small holes in. Sample sentence, the aromas of the breakfast menu had been percolating. Another sample sentence is, coffee lovers are realizing that the best result of coffee mix is to be obtained through a simple percolation or simple filtration. You are strongly encouraged to use the word in your sentence all throughout the meeting. And uh, I would like to call on some volunteers to use the word.
Percolation is not only a benefit for coffee. It could be also used for filtering out tasks that we don't need to do in the day. So remember to use percolation throughout your day. Thank you.
Yes, okay, one more?
Okay, I would like to redeem myself because I have. Yeah, because I forgot to to mention the word of the day. Percolation is all about filtration. And in the internet culture, we have to percolate, which are the good news and the bad news. That's all.
Okay, so thank you very much for also volunteer to use the word. I am encouraging each one of you to use the word all throughout the session.
Okay, thank you, D P M Norma. And again, I would like to apologize for toastmasters happen that happened, but I hope I I was able to, I mean, get back. And also, like what D P M Norma said, we are encouraging everyone to use the word of the day, percolation, in the duration of our meeting. And also, we can use variation of this this word like percolate. We can use it as a verb, we can use it as an adjective, as long as the main thought still there. Okay, and now, again, one going back, we are moving forward. One of the, let's say, another exciting part of the meeting. It's the table topic. And again, I will introduce to you, T M Elaine. T M Elaine, the floor is now yours. This is real.
Good afternoon again, my fellow Toastmaster. Thank you for that uh, great introduction. Uh, T M, T M of the day, uh, T M Gemiel. Uh, fellow Toastmaster, guests, good afternoon again. One of the most exciting portion of the Toastmasters' meeting is the table topic portion. The main objective is to challenge members to develop their impronto communication skills to effectively think on their feet by answering unrehearsed questions. We also want to give every member the opportunity to speak at each meeting. We do this with table topic session. Table topic is specifically designed to develop our four communication skills. And that is first, listening. So, listening. Thinking, organizing, and the last, speaking. Today, as your table topic master, I will be asking question related all about coffee. But before we start, can you kindly P M me any tangible thing that comes in your mind when you are drinking coffee? Or whatever you see while drinking coffee? For example, cup, a cell phone, a spoon. It should be tangible. It should be something that you can hold, you can. So I have prepared here ten statements or questions now. You need to choose one person and a number, okay? You you, once you are ready for the table topics and you volunteered or I called you, just choose one person and a number. Is that clear? Before we go to the next, uh, uh, your your response must be one minute and can be no more than two minutes, but you have a leave wait of thirty seconds. You have a s- you will see a green signal for one minute, a yellow signal at one thirty, at one and thirty seconds, and a red signal at two minutes. We're going to choose the best table topic answer or the best speaker in table topics. In order to qualify, you should be, you should have a minimum of one minute. So not less than one minute, you are not qualified if you have less than one minute and a maximum of two minutes and thirty seconds, yeah. And also encourage everyone to use the word of the day, percolation. So can you give me one person and a number?
Uh, J C, number one.
Saucer.
Okay, so uh, J C Saucer. So number one, so here's your question or your statement. If saucer can talk, what would it tell you? If saucer can talk, what would it tell you? T M Pow.
If saucer can talk, what will it tell me? A lot of people in this world are just like coffee. They wake up, they open their eyes, they drink coffee, and they work. Coffee is our ingredient, one of our ingredients for success. Personally, I've been a fanatic of this drink. And coffee now is my life. However, since it's becoming, it's becoming innate with me, I want to tell you that too much of something is not good. There there was a time when I was trying to sleep because I had a shift. But then, of course, coffee is life and it became my nightmare. And right now, everyone, a lot of people are living like this. And if a saucer is just right here beside me, it will tell me, Pow, that cup of coffee that you're holding, put it down, put it away, take it slow, put it on me. I have a saucer on my hand right now and I am putting the coffee just right here because I just realized that I'm having too much of it. And it's not giving benefits, but it's actually somehow destroying me. Going back the court, you missed table topic.
Here is your question. What does it mean to be a cop? What does it mean to be a cop? T M Marilu.
There's a saying which goes that anything is half full or half empty. And it it is true with a cup or any other container. Now, when it comes, since we're talking about over a cup of coffee, let me equate this particular cup specifically for coffee. As what Pow mentioned, sometimes a cup of coffee taken in excess is is becomes harmful to an individual. And therefore, moderation is executed in order that we will have good physical health. This cup is really an important part of having a coffee. We are given a chance also that this particular cup, if we take it in our life, is something that we should not overflow. Or if we overflow, it is it is supposed to be overflowing with positive and that is kindness and generosity. That's all. Thank you.
Of Norma, six.
T M Norma. T M Norma is number six. Granules. So here is your question. You saw granules. You cried. Why? You saw granules. You cried. Why?
You saw granules. You cry. Why? It's hard to answer because I don't know why. So let's start the game. Negativity is quite normal today. Some said that it is okay to be not okay today because of what's happening today. And that is attributed probably because of our vulnerability. Sometimes we saw things which are scattered, like granules. We saw things that are not organized, like granules. And we tend to cry because sometimes our life are not organized like those granules. But ladies and gentlemen, today it is okay not to be okay because of our vulnerability. And we need to consider that because in order to solve our problems, we need to know and be aware that we have a problem. And crying is but natural. Crying will somewhat make us strong. And those granules of life? Let's learn. We need to have that percolation of thoughts in order to transform that negativity to positivity. That's all.
Uh, Juwi, number six.
Six is already uh, taken.
Uh, number eight.
Number eight? And it is Juwi, right? Juwi, what's your word?
My word is initially it was Nacho, so I changed it into Pandesal.
Yeah, Pandesal, yes. I I saw it, Pandesal. So, uh, John Paul, this is your question, but number eight. Can you describe your life using a parable of Pandesal? Can you describe your life using parable of Pandesal? T M John Paul Pantoha.
Uh, during the pandemic, I had a lot of time. There were so many things that was happening. There were so many things that were happening. And I was not used to the fact that I had so much free time. I was used to percolating things not to do, things to do, using the system of percolation, just like coffee. But then, one day, I found some pieces of paper. It was the secret formula for the Pantoha Pandesal. It was made by my grandfather. And when I saw it, there was this, some kind of metaphor of the Pandesal that I connected with my life. That in order to become a tasty Pandesal or have a great life, you need certain ingredients. These ingredients are well measured. They can be tested. And while I was thinking about this, I told myself, maybe I just need to find the right ingredients so I can achieve the life that I want. Either it's physical health, it's studying more, learning more, learning new types of program, software. All of this is to achieve one thing, is that is my perfect Pandesal life. But this cannot be found in just one experimentation. As you may know, to have a tasty Pandesal, my grandfather experimented a lot of stuff. Little bit of grams here, two grams of sugar, ten grams of sugar, flour, how to mix it. So it's all an experimentation. So it's very cool for me to start really visualizing and percolating what are those right ingredients for my life. So back to you, Ma'Amelaine. Thank you.
Steph, number two.
Yeah, it's a book. You traveled two hundred twenty years in the past with a book with you. Sell this item to the eighteenth century people. You traveled two hundred twenty years in the past with a book with you. Sell this book to the eighteenth century people. T M J C.
Well, that's a good one. I'm not quite sure if book is already available that time. But if I would sell that, or if I would sell a book on the eighteenth century, I will definitely, well, if I'm, I'll be back or I I'm gonna back to like two, two hundred years ago. Um, I think I'll definitely try to sell it in a way that I will definitely highlight the importance of it. It's like you are giving them the advantage of having a book. It means that as early as on their generation, you can definitely have them write all the things that will happen moving forward on that year. And I can say that that would definitely help not just that generation, but of course, the generation that we have right now. If that book will definitely have all the all the information that we have from the past, I think it would give us an idea of how we can make it better in the future. It's like a coffee in, it it's just a coffee. It's like a coffee for a person who just woke up. It's giving them the idea or it gives them more energy of what what should they do on that specific thing. Well, that's it for me. Thank you.
It's okay, T M J C. So do we still have, uh, we already have five, but uh, if there is anyone uh, still want to speak up, especially those who have no speech today. Okay, T M Juwi, you choose T M Pow and his word is teaspoon. And number nine is statement or question is, uh, the question is, what is the simplest truth a teaspoon can give you? T M Juwi, what is the simplest truth a teaspoon can give you? T M Juwi.
Okay, so I think if the teaspoon could talk to me and give me a simple truth, I think the spoon will tell me to take things one step at a time. Because you don't need too much at one go, especially if you have too many things in one plate. So a teaspoon only scoops a portion of anything, especially cakes or sugar or coffee. So in terms of measurement, you don't need to take one sandok of bigas or candy. You only need to have a little bit once in a while because if you eat using a sandok or a a wok, then you will choke. And if you use the teaspoon, at least you get the taste, even it's very fleeting. You experience it slowly so you won't be burnt out or put to rest using a big spoon. So that is all. Back to you, uh, T M Elaine.
Thank you, T M Juwi.
Got questions for our table topic? I, can we all give T M Elaine a ha- a round of applause? I can say that she really did focus or she really. She, okay, uh, can you hear me, guys?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Okay, yeah, let's give her a round of applause because I can see how she was really prepared. And she always give a a twist on the there, on our table topic. She always give so a sprinkle of novelty on our table topic. And also, let's give a round of applause to our fellow Toastmaster who answered the question that T M Elaine has given to us. I can say that all of you are like brewed coffee. The questions that have been thrown to you are like the fire that has been ignited when brewing coffee. And those questions has a challenge you. It has percolate, it percolate. And those questions that challenge you, it has percolate- it percolates your thoughts until you were able to produce a well blended answer. So again, hands up to everyone. So now, before we proceed to the prepared speeches portion, I would just like to give you an update. There has been a mishap that happened. T M Wendell, who's our general evaluator for this meeting, wasn't able to attend because there has been some technical issues currently happening. She cannot or she wasn't able to connect in our meeting. So T M John Paul or T M Pow will be the one who will be taking over as a general evaluator. So he has to Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, fellow Toastmasters. So this is my second speech project under Presentation Mastery. And going to the first level, which is Icebreaker. This is going to be different and I put a twist on how I will present my Icebreaker speech for today. So I have several questions on my presentation or on my slides. And I will let you choose the best answer on how well you know me. Alright, so are we excited and are we ready for this fun learning session?
Yes.
Okay, alright. And I highly encourage everyone to type in your answers in our chat pod. And the everyone, I should see everyone's name on our chat pod. So let's see if you guys really, 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 another really know me well. Let's start. First question. Spell my name. Is it A, B, C, or D? Let's see. Let me look at the chat pod. Wow. Letter C. So most of you answered letter C? Awesome. That's right. So why did I ask this? A lot of people mistakenly spell my name. So it's either letter A or letter, letter D. Worse is letter B. But just to give you an idea, my parents got my name from the famous singer way, way back in eighteen hundreds or seventeen hundreds. I don't know. But her name is Gloria Estefan. So that's where they get, they got my name. Estefan, letter C. Es- Estefany. Okay, for our next question. There. What is my childhood dream? Is it the first image, the second, or the third? Which one do you think is my childhood dream? First, second, or third? First? Okay, we have a third? First? What about the others? What are your thoughts? One? Okay. So just so you know, I'm torn between the first and the third, but my heart really goes to the third. So what is that? A window or a glass cleaner? I don't know how you call it, but a glass cleaner. Why? Let me give you a, a, a history behind that. When I was still a child, my father, my dad would al- would always ask me to clean or to wash our, our car. So I really enjoyed washing the, especially the glass of the, of our car. And I am using, and I even he broke the wiper from one of our cars just to use it to, in, in wiping the glass of the other car. So I, I just enjoy that. So that's why I dreamt of growing up, I wanna be a glass cleaner. Why not? Anyway, going to the third question. There. What do you think is my favorite color? A, B, or C? B. We have C, we have B. What about the other? C? Wow, we're torn between letter B and C. Why not neon green? Why not the letter A? But J C and T M Elaine got it correctly. My favorite color is letter C. It's mustard yellow. So before, when I was still in elementary, my favorite color is pink. But uh there's, the only thing constant in this world is change. So that's why I changed my mind. And every time I see mustard yellow things, it's, I mean, my, my, my eyes is just uh sparkling. So it's letter C. Next question. Wow, you guys are so good. There. What is my go-to spot? So the one above is a pizza, pizza salon? Next is a cafe and a boutique full of dresses, full of accessories, bags, shoes. Which one? Second, third, C, A. Are you sure? Because you're a fashionista and I think you have a business about fashion. Nicely done, T M Gem. And the correct answer is, no, not this. I love pizza, but my go-to spot is a cafe. Before, actually, when I was still in college, my go-to spot is really a boutique. Like a thrift shop there. That's how we call it, a thrift shop. That's my go-to spot way, way back. But cafe is my favorite go-to spot nowadays because it makes me feel relaxed and refreshed. And every time I want to restart and refresh my mind, we always look for a coffee shop, a quiet place. There. And next question is, what do you think is my favorite drink? You think it's a milk tea? Do you think it's a tea or a cup of coffee? All, wow, J C, all. I'm not, I'm not you know that. You know what I mean. Healthy. We've had a talk about it. Whoa. What about T M Malu? What's your guess? Do you think it's a coffee? Okay, a tea or a milk tea? Okay. All your answers are correct. So let me give you a history. Always a history. Because I'm a, I'm like a, I'm sometimes bipolar. I, I always change my mind. So way back, my favorite is milk tea. It's I'm when milk tea, when milk tea is still, I mean, it's, it's, milk tea is still a famous drink for, for everyone. But I think due to my age, as we grow older, we choose to, to be more energized and to look for something which will make us productive and which will make us productive with everything that we do. So nowadays, I am really torn between these two, the tea and the coffee. I, I sometimes drink a cup of tea when I think that I have eaten so much or too much junk foods. So it's time for cleansing inside. Just, I, I, I just had this last night. But most of the time, due to our, due to our working environment, work environment as well, so I really get used to drinking coffee all the time. And every time Pow, yeah, every time Pow ask me to, to, to go somewhere and ask me to, hey, let's have, let's grab a cup of coffee. It's like my eyes are already sparkling because of a cup of coffee. I don't know. There's something in coffee that I really love. So that's why my favorite drink now is coffee. So there, those are just the several questions that I have prepared for my Icebreaker speech. I hope you enjoyed. Oh, no, there's more. Cause you enjoyed, there's more. Okay. What do you think is my newfound, okay, newfound hobby?
Newfound meaning just recently?
Yeah, yes. Newfound hobby. Is it yoga? Is it photography or painting? Let's see. Are you torn? Painting? Yoga because you're already in photog- wow, photography. Who else? Number two. What about, J C, what about you? What about T M Juwi? What are your guesses? You think it's yoga? Do you think it's photography or do you think it's painting? Okay, there we go. And the correct answer is, it's yoga. Yes, yoga is my newfound hobby during the quarantine. Photography is my hobby ever since I am in high school. Painting, I think, I love painting, but painting hates me. So I'm into painting. So my newfound hav- hobby is yoga, especially when I'm really experiencing too much back pain. So it's yoga. Next, what do you think is my dream job? Is it this one, the first, a se- the second one, or the third one? This is the, this is an astronaut. Is it first, the second, or the third? Astronaut. This one is, how do you call this? A doctor. What are your guesses?
Veterinarian.
Ve- yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a ve- veterinarian. Number three. Okay, thank you everyone. And the correct answer is the first one. Sometimes I thought of having an astronaut as my, as my job, but I think it's really hard cause you have to be or to live too far from your family for a very long time and you have to ride the jet. So I just thought of having a flight attendant as my dream job because I'm an outrageous and I'm an adventurous person. I want to go to different places abroad like Paris, like New Zealand, Netherlands, Swit- Switzerland, all of the lands that you can see everywhere. So my dream job is to be a flight attendant. And that's it for my Icebreaker speech. I hope that you have enjoyed my speech with a twist. And you were able to get to know me way, way better than before. Thank you everyone. And back to you, T M Gem.
Thank you so much, T M Jamiel, and to all our participants for today's meeting. And to formally end our meeting, by the power vested in me by Toastmasters International, I now close this meeting.